Good evening. This is the caucus and council meetings of March 27, 2024, Council Chamber. Presiding Officer of the Council, Miladi Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed on the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the City Clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers. City Hall 260 High Street at 5:30, right now is 5:40 PM. The council meeting will follow the caucus and the closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Morales. Present. Councilman Puccio.
Present.
Councilman Torres.
Present.
Council President Tejeda.
Present.
Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum for speakers per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 432, including zoning of the city code requirement or applicable developments to include a mandatory onsite affordable housing set aside. Mr. Opel.
We're waiting for the court to approve the consent order on this still, so tonight the council, instead of having the hearing and voting, you'll be voting to carry the hearing until the meeting on April 10th. And that'll be, the hearing will be published and noticed, you know, as any other ordinance. But we thought we were going to have the signed order from the court by today, and still don't. No, no concerns on our end, just an administrative thing with the court getting the order signed. So we should be in good shape by the 10th.
Thank you. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Records. Ordinance number 621-92, adopted August 4, 1992, as amended by ordinance number 1944-2020, adopted May 27, 2020, also known as Chapter 425-6 of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for maximum of five minutes. Reports. Number one, Jill A. Goldie, CFO, controller, submitted the following. Investment report for February 2024. Check register report for the month of February 2024 in the total amount of $16,894,755 with 46 cents. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. An ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons. Ordinance number 380-85 on amendments, adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255-A of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. And this is about deletions. Resolutions, public hearing on the, on the calendar year 2024 municipal budget, R-82-224. R115324, amending the calendar year 2024 municipal budget. And I would like Jill to come up, if she may, and kind of go over the amendments that we need on the budget.
Good evening, Councilwoman. There were a few amendments that were required by the House to be reviewed. All very minor. The first point is that the budget was introduced prior to the state certifying the state aid numbers. And the thing is that after the introduction, they actually gave up $46,290,14 more in the last year. So that requires an amendment to the budget to increase that revenue. And then because of that, there is an alternating offset in the reduction of the use of surplus funds of the revenue to offset that amount. The second item is there's a $300,000 revenue item that we reported on a particular section of the budget, and a state asset would be classified to a different age. So what the amendment has to show is that it's just being moved from one place to another. And the third item is, last year, we received two grants from Fitlot, AARP, for a little outdoor fitness area. They were owed $3,510, except that the second allocation got put in the budget last year at $3,500. We missed the $10. We actually got the $10 in the second allocation, and so that's being amended to the budget this year. We missed the $10 for that. And that's essentially it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill. R-116324, adopting the calendar year 2024 municipal budget.
Madam President.
I'm sorry?
I have a question. I was reviewing the budget, and maybe Mr. Green could help out. I noticed that there was no line item for police director. Are we currently looking for a police director?
Michael Green, Business Administrator, no, we are not.
All right, then, I want to make a little statement. In lieu of all the news of the last couple of years, since this administration has taken over, I think Perthamboy has been in the news more than, than, I think, ever. And not of the news for positive things. The last couple of videos that came out were extremely disturbing, and it shows how basically the, the foundation is crumbling. There is a total lack of respect in the quorum. I asked for the mayor to fulfill his last campaign promise and to step down as the police director and to hire a professional to take that position. And I asked for the council to ask for the same thing. This is something that the community needs. This would be responsible governing. This would fulfill the promises that were made in the past. Oh, well, guess not. I guess the status quo remains in this council yet again is just willing to allow this to continue. Thank you.
I just don't feel that the need of a director. I think the chief of police is doing a tremendous job in this community, and, and that's his job. So I, I see the things that are happening. I think Perthamboy is not what people makes it look like out there, but it's only my opinion. I think we're, we're doing a tremendous job with the police department and the safety of this town.
For a healthy government, you need a separation of powers. The council cannot be subservient to the administration. We need to hold the administration liable for their actions. Without a separation of power, without oversight, you would have a dysfunctional democracy, and you would have what we have today in Perthamboy.
Anybody else?
I'll just make, just a comment, not on police director, but just on like what's going on in our community. I do agree that we need to do better in certain aspects. I do see that there's a lot of great things going on, and sometimes there's not highlighted enough. For example, Powell doing an amazing job, and as part of our, one of our resolutions as well, wanting to expand with boxing and doing amazing with the youth in different capacities. But I do think as a community, we just need to show respect towards law enforcement and maybe have this dialogue, maybe have more of this dialogue in terms of like what next and a plan. So while there may be a lot in the news, there is a lot of positivity happening that, of course, is not highlighted. So I do applaud the police officers for doing amazing with the youth and amazing what they're doing and amazing at staying professional despite the obstacles that are coming across them. That's it.
I'd like to just say one more thing. In 2020, when I ran for this seat with a team for change, one of the first things I asked a candidate for mayor, Helman Cava, was a question about police director. I was promised that a professional will be hired. Here we are going on the fourth year. Promises should be kept.
Anybody else?
Okay. R117324, amending R71224, authorizing refund of code compliance fee for property located at 500 Johnston Street in the amount of $140 to Laura Peasey. R118324, accepting the proposal of and awarding a contract to All Lead New Jersey for Lead Base Paint Inspector Services in the amount not to exceed $111,050, which is being funded through a grant. R119324, amending R26124, authorizing settlement of two workers' compensation litigation via an order approving settlement in the matter entitled Domingo Cepeda versus City of Perthamboy, CP number 2021-216547, and CP number 2022-6483, in the total amount of $89,374. R12324, authorizing the submission of an application to Middlesex County 2024 Recycling Enhancement Grant Program. R121324, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from, from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, NJDCA, 2024, open space in the amount of $1 million. R122324, authorizing a contract for professional planning services to Topology for area in need of redevelopment, preliminary investigation report, and a need of rehabilitation report in the amount not to exceed $144,510, which is being funded through a grant. R123324, directing the city tax collector to place a lien on 940 State Street Black 427 Lot 5 in the amount of $568,000 for charges incurred by the fire department's Fire Prevention Bureau from January 5, 2024 to March 14, 2024, for the order to pay penalties on uniform fire code violation, NJAC 5, Column 70-2.12, and unsafe operations. R124324, confirming acceptance of the provision of state, community, and family core appropriation programs to youths residing in Middlesex County, Grant Station House Adjustment Counseling Community Engagement Program to provide services and innovative approaches for our risk youth proposal, CC-23-906, in the amount of $59,500 per county file number 24-230R. R125324, authorizing the proper city officials to apply for the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Office of, of the Attorney General Safe and Secure Communities Grant Program, SFY 24, in the amount of $33,000. R126324, authorizing contract with Gentilini Chevrolet for the purchase of 1 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe and 4 WD with options through New Jersey State Contract, T-2776, in the amount of not to exceed $56,542 with 14 cents.
Just to be consistent, since, since in the past, in recent past, we have scrutinized other departments for, for these types of items, I would like to know what is this car being purchased for and what is the use of it?
Counsel, this vehicle is going to be used for the...
Okay. All right, that's better. Councilman, this vehicle is going to be used for the patrol supervisor. It's going to replace the 2016 Tahoe that's currently in service. That mileage is getting run up there, and we'll be able to move that to ancillary services, and this will be on the front line for the police supervisor on the street every day.
So this is a regular patrol car? This will be a patrol car, or this is a supervisor's car that's going to be supervising the patrol cars?
Correct. It'll be assigned to a supervisor patrol sergeant who will be supervising the patrol officers on the street every day.
Would they have access to this on off-hours, this vehicle?
It's a 24/7 vehicle that will be in service.
They'll have access, because in the past, there's been times where, where employees might have been using these types of vehicles off-hours and maybe doing other things also that might or should not have been done during those off-hours, using those type of vehicles, most like a Chevy Tahoe. And I was wondering if these, this vehicle is going to be used during off-hours and possibly, you know, if there's going to be any oversight on how it's going to be used? If it's going to be used for campaigning or anything like that? How are we going to know if there's no oversight? What type of oversight would they have?
It's a marked police vehicle?
A marked police vehicle?
Oh, yes. Marked police vehicle that will have a sergeant or lieutenant in police uniform operating on the roads there 24 hours a day, seven days a week assigned. If it's not currently in service, it'll be right outside the window of the lieutenant.
I'm saying this because we do have vehicles that are not marked, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's why I'm saying this. So this vehicle is going to be a marked vehicle?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the vehicles that are not marked, do the people who have access to them, do they have access to them on off-hours when they're not working?
Some have vehicles that they do take home with them, yes, according to our policies, yes, sometimes that is done.
And they're get to use them just as, as they please?
No, there's, no, absolutely not. There's a policy in place that identifies what their use points are.
There should be more oversight in places, what I'm saying. In the past, there has been times where vehicles have been used probably for other things. I personally have witnessed this. So there should be some oversight of how these vehicles are going to be used, is what I'm saying, going forward.
I absolutely agree, Councilman. If there's anything you see that you feel that's not proper, if you want to bring it to the Business Administrator's attention or my attention, it'll be brought to the fullest and investigated and see what, what happened and what it was.
Great. And now while you're here, I have a request, and I'll probably send it tomorrow, email this way. I want, I requested the CAD report for the response time for the incident that occurred on St. Patrick's Day on the INSIS section on Convery and Smith Street for the response time. I would like to have the CAD report. Okay, Mr. Green?
It's, frankly, it's operable, and it was disclosed in many newspaper articles and so forth that were out there and so forth.
Yeah, but I would still like to, to, to review it. So if, just kidding, I'll probably send an email out in the morning also for that CAD report.
Absolutely. One of the things, just to understand, one of the things that we, we endured there is, although it may have been going on for a while, I had not seen in any of the videos that I saw, anyone with their cell phones this way, they were this way. Everyone was recording. We had to get the call to be able to respond.
But the response time was, the, the public response report stated that it was a two-minute response time. So I would like to see that CAD report.
It didn't exactly say that, but I'll go over with you, absolutely.
Okay, that's great.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. R127324, authorizing change order number one to the contract with SHI for upgrades to the city's IT infrastructure under NASPO, NJ Contract AR 3227, in the amount not to exceed $69,872 with 24 cents. R128324, authorizing contract with Paramus Ford, Inc., DBA, All American Ford of Paramus for the purchase of 1 2023 Ford Transit 350 LR Pass XL RWD through Co-op 65 MCES, CCPS, bid number ESCNJ 2324-11, in the amount not to exceed $57,992 with 75 cents. R1...
Once again, just to be consistent, because in the recent past, we really scrutinized one of the departments over a vehicle they wanted to purchase. So these vehicles that are coming forward, I would like to ask, what are these vehicles being purchased for? Since the council has scrutinized one of the departments in the recent past, we should be consistent and ask every department. So I'm just going to ask, what is this vehicle being purchased for? What is going to be the use of it?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the City Council. The purchase of this vehicle will be done primarily to transport meals during the summer months for our meal delivery program to the parks, and during off summertime will be to transport athletes to different events. It will be driven by a city employee, and this is being purchased partly through capital and partly through a grant. You're welcome.
Thank you. R129324, authorizing refund of 11 handicap parking application fees in the total amount of $1,100 due to denial by the police department. R130324, authorizing the submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, NJDEP, Hazardous Discharge Site Fund for funding for the assessment and investigation of the High Street Connector 985-995 High Street. R131324, authorizing execution of an indemnification agreement with Eddie and Brenda Trujillo Family Foundation, Inc., for the operation of recreational boxing program at 228 High Street.
Mr. Green, can you just elaborate on the timeline for that one?
Michael Green. So let's go April 1st to June 30th. It's after schools and Saturdays for kids that are eight to 17. And those people that are going to be the instructors, of course, have a current background check, and they have Safe Play certification. So as I know someone alluded to earlier, the police athletic, that's my favorite, yeah, the police athletic league, and having our children participate in boxing, also learning some leadership there as well, so.
And there's a component for social, emotional health?
I'm not sure about the social and emotional health, but do you know if Diana, social and emotional health is included in this program? I know it's leadership. I'm assuming that that entails that, but I don't know this particular. So yes, it does. Thank you, Dan.
R132324, authorizing execution of an indemnification agreement with Haru Town Terrace LLC to locate a summer lunch program. R133324, canceling the unexpected, unexpended City of Perthamboy Capital Fund improvement authorization in the amount of $2,635 with 24 cents. R134324, canceling the unexpended City of Perthamboy Capital Fund improvement authorization in the amount of $324,890 with 2 cents.
Madam President. I have a question. Yes, what was the suspended church every night?
So the first one, 133, is an ordinance that was passed many years ago to do the construction of the Brighton Avenue Community Center, primarily with funds from the fire that occurred at the old tennis building, perhaps? I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly. This is the unexpended balance, and because that project is considered complete, and this is just a small amount of funds that were left over, we're canceling them off. R134 was an ordinance that was done, fully funded, to pay for renovations to the Perthamboy Public Library and the surrounding property there. And that particular ordinance, what that called for, has been completed, and the project is finished. These funds of $324,892 and 2 cents is going to go back to a reserve for the library so that in the future, if they look to do another capital improvement program of some sort or a project, this money would then be available for them to pay for it without issuing any debt.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. R135324, authorizing a contract with Suburban Consulting Engineering, Inc., for the professional land surveying, engineering, and construction observation services related to the Fink Park improvement in the amount not to exceed $95,700, which is being funded through a grant. R136324, authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year 2024 temporary budget in the amount of $12,78,280. And this is only...
If the budget doesn't pass.
If the budget doesn't pass.
We have that...
We also have one, one resolution to add. That's Resolution of the City of Perthamboy, Middlesex County, New Jersey, Accepting the Bid and Authorization of Contract for Parks and Public Properties Maintenance Commencing April 1, 2024 and Terminating November 7, 2024, with two, one, two and one-year options to Custom Care Services, Inc., Wall, New Jersey, 077119, in the amount not to exceed And this is... Can you speak on this?
I'm sorry? Can somebody explain what this is about? I believe Matthew's here to explain it.
Good evening, Council. That's the grass cutting contract, the one that we do every year. That's just, that's the...
It's just for, I just read it after I called you up.
Yeah, it's for the city properties. We have a list if you guys want to see it, but yeah. It's the same one that we put in for every year. We're just putting it in again, but we do have two options that we have the ability to pick up next year and the following, so we don't have to go out to bid. And the number is the same, so we may pick it up depending on the service that we get. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I need, we just added, right? Communications.
Madam President?
Yes?
I gotta ask a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
First communication and the second communication about the, the lead gasoline tanks. It says Public Safety Complex, but it says 400 Stamford Street. See what the both letters? One is the higher, I mean, the company is going to do it, and then somebody's going to remediate that. But it says the Public Safety Complex, but when I looked it up on the map, it's the old auto body shop on Stamford Street. I don't understand what this is.
It came from suburban engineers. I mean, that's, you know, I don't know.
But what I'm saying is, why is it including the Public Safety Complex?
I don't, I couldn't tell you.
Are there, are there tanks in the ground at the Public Safety Complex? But it says 400 Stamford Street. Stamford Street, 400 is the last property on the right at the dead end that 400... that orders reliable auto body. But my, my, my question is, why is the public safety complex-
Listed here.
Listed there, when the public safety complex is on the other side of the railroad tracks?
What I'll do is I'll follow up and get the answers.
Do we have anyone here from Suburban Consulting Engineering? Because it seems that there's a very large item. They have a large item here on this agenda. It seems that someone would be here from them to answer any questions. They have a contract here for almost a hundred thousand dollars. I'm talking about R one thirty-five. So unless they thought that they already had this, they would have sent someone over here just in case if something like this arose, that we had a question. But I guess they think they already got this contract in the bag.
And my other, I'm sorry, my other question then is, because it says three, four thousand gallon lead gasoline underground storage tanks. That's what I guess U S T stands for. Now, I know that back in the day, way back in the day, before the public safety complex was ever built, the building to the, where the Y N C A sits was a office supply store, called Patton Office Supply. And then railroad tracks, there were four sets of tracks that separated the back of that building and Stamford Street. So my, my real concern is, is I don't see why they added in their letter, because they're saying the underground storage tanks are at the public safety complex.
The property in question is not owned by the city?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I understand.
This was an unsolicited letter. We need some clarification.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, not trying to be a hard guy.
No, I understand what you're saying, sir. I will make sure.
I'm just trying to understand that.
Right. And since I don't have the answer, and maybe I wasn't clear, I would definitely follow up with them, and I want to make sure that all the council is carbon copying from the court.
The property on the other side is, you know, owned by somebody, or did we take the property over? That's the other question.
Okay.
Hey, I mean, I don't know that. So I-
I'll find out. I'll definitely. It will be carbon copied by tomorrow for sure.
And the other question-
Go ahead.
The other one about the groundwater remedial action permit issued for five sixty-seven New Brunswick Gavin, Perth Amboy LLC. Now, I looked at that. That is the radiological builder that does M R Is and X rays. It used to be a pizza place. But what would there be a need when they're talking about the groundwater? What's going on that they need a permit for that? That would be my question. I know, you know, just let me know when you find out.
Right. I have the four, the three from you and the one from the councilman Torres.
Okay. Close session resolution, R one fourteen, three twenty-four, authorizing a close session at the March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four meeting to discuss workers' compensation litigation, Domingo Zepeda versus City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we have to do one by one. Okay, go ahead.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yeah.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. The portion, five minutes maximum for speakers. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're open to the public? Anybody?
I can speak about anything right now, right? This is the caucus.
Yes.
Open for portion?
Yes.
Joseph Voss, three seventeen, Record Street. I want to talk about the budget. You guys are introducing it tonight, right? Or seeking to adopt it? Wow. Next step, right? So my question is this. I guess I'll ask the president to ask the business administrator, how much of the budget factors in non-recurring income as well as one-time revenue?
I don't have that breakdown right now. I'll make sure.
Today, we're gonna vote on it. The public is asking questions. I don't understand how you're not prepared to answer that question for the public today. You are the business administrator. I'm not trying to preach to you, but today would be the day that you should know, right?
I have the budget.
You're saying that you're gonna find out tomorrow, after they vote on it, is not gonna provide anything to the public?
You're saying the number of non-recurring revenue?
Yeah.
There's one time, one time. I don't have that right now. And I'm sure we will find it before the regular meeting. We'll have that for you.
Well, because my question is this, is that what happens when that non-recurring revenue and one-time revenue no longer makes its way to our budget? I mean, I think you asked that question last time, Mr. Puccio, about, you know, some of the grant money that we're getting, that was the one-time grant money. And so my concern is whether or not we're doing the fiscally responsible thing by, you know, we are keeping taxes level, as I understand it, but it's being done with one-time revenue, which is kicking the can down the road for the next city council and the next administration to deal with if that money does not occur again.
Now I understand your question, but you're saying how much, okay, now I understand. So how much is grants? There's three million in this budget of-
No, not just grants, but one-time recurring grants.
So grants are three million dollars. Now, with that being-
One-time recurring.
Right. But grants, again, happen every year. There's no promise or guarantee of any grant, and that's true. They were true in previous administrations. They're true in this administration. What do you do to confront that? Again, like the Office of Economic and Community Development is doing, is seeing what agreements you can have for development throughout the city. And that's one thing that we're continuing to do. Also looking at for different revenue resources that might be available. For example, things that the city has been doing over previous administrations, that we said we're not gonna do during this administration, for example, making sure people pay their fair share, whether it's different entities throughout the city, when we pick up their trash. In the past, they weren't charged. But this administration is making sure, for example, there might be a school out there that was getting it done for free. The taxpayers shouldn't pay for that. Therefore, we did the responsible thing, went out and said, okay, you have to pay your fair share for that. So again, there's always grants in every budget. With that being said, you cannot count on them, like you're saying. But again, you have to think of different ways, most importantly, economic development, to try and resource that.
Yeah, I mean, but that's a crapshoot, and you don't really know what's gonna happen in the future. I mean-
I cannot predict. There could be a war next year, you're right.
Well, you don't know if the grants are gonna occur next year. What you do know is you know what your salary and wages are, and you know what your other expenses are. So there are other ways to do the fiscally responsible thing and not just rely on one-time fixes.
So salaries and wages, you're right, too. You could cut salaries and wages and let people out.
Or other expenses, or other expenses. There are other expenses in the-
Well, other expenses you're talking about, and again, let's go into that, and it's good we're having this, giving this dialogue. Other expenses might be, for example, gas and electricity. That's another expense. Or you're talking about paper, that's needed. So there are these other expenses, but again, there's fluidity within the market, so we can't really predict what's the price of gas and electricity for tomorrow. And there's things that we have to do, but yes, there are.
My question is that there are ways to, like, lower the budget, like, there are ways to lower expenses if you don't know that the money's gonna keep on coming in. And by doing that, you're, you're essentially kicking the can down the road. Am I, am I, am I wrong?
Well, no.
Because I mean, I understand that everyone wants to boast in an election year that taxes are stable, but the reality is that next year, somebody's gonna have to pay for it. The taxpayers are gonna have to pay for it. If you don't have it, then why spend it?
Well, let's talk about the budget in real terms. Majority of this budget, and that's what we went through in our first presentation of it, majority of it, unfortunately or fortunately, is the people sitting here, the employees. Why? Because as you know, dealing with the budget, it's not only our salaries, that's a small microcosm of it, it's also the pension and healthcare, which is the most important part of that. And so the only way to really look at any budget, even if you're talking about the federal budget, when they're talking about social security and stuff, is to say, okay, now, like you're saying, do you wanna lay off individuals? And that's something we're definitely not gonna look at. Or say-
I'm just echoing the things that Mr. Puccio made, you know, a week ago, two weeks ago, when he said, you know, we can't keep on relying on one-time revenue, because at some point, you know, the hazard has come on the roof.
And you're right, and the councilman's right, because grants, whether it's the cop grant or the, the fire safety grant, all those times, you never know what's gonna happen in the future. You know we have it for three years, but after those three years, what could happen? Again, I can't, I'm not a prognosticator. I'm not sure. We could get in a war with Putin tomorrow. I'm not sure. But you do do the best, but again, the best way to do that is with our Office of Economic Development, looking for ways to, within the budget, looking for economic development within the community. But yes, you have a point, and so does councilman. You never know.
I want to say one thing about raises, since you keep on bringing this up. The one thing I do agree about the budget is that the council is the only body that is not gonna receive a raise. We have not received a raise in years. And I agree with that, especially since we cut the time. I left my Mondays and Wednesdays open to attend these meetings, but we cut the time in half. I, I put in just as much work as I did when we were doing the two meetings, you know, because at home, I read all the documents and I do a lot of research. But I do agree, especially during these tough times, that the council does not deserve a raise. But also, there's other parties that should not get a raise also, like the mayor. And every year, there's been an incremental raise, except for the council. We're the only party who has not received it. But mostly, every other supervisor and director position has received it, does not need to receive it. To say, well, this year, we're gonna take, you know, we're gonna, the community's, you know, not doing so well. We're gonna take a little break with the raises. You know, we understand that the workers get theirs. But the top brass receives raises every year. The only group that does not receive a raise is this group, even though they approve all of the raises.
Anybody else?
Council President Junior Iglesias, seventh of Columbus Circle. I have some questions concerning the proposed budget. Our, the cost of living in our community is every time more expensive, and everything continue to increase, more particularly, our water bill. In our surplus, in our budget, we can see a surplus from water in wastewater utility of three hundred thousand dollars. And I know that this was introduced in the preliminary budget, but then later removed and plugged in in a different line item. And I think at the beginning of the meeting, I think this was referred to as the state saying that this needs to be introduced in another line item. And then I can see that the line item is the anticipated utility operating surplus. So my question is, what is the difference of utilizing a different language if on the budget, it still have the same value in terms of money, still three hundred thousand dollars, and it's still revenue? The only difference is the language. Surplus from water, water waste utility to change it to anticipated utility and operating surplus. So that is question number one. Question number two, the water bill have been increasing significantly, and to many homeowners and hardworking families in our community, it had caused to certain extent, some sort of hardship. So my question is, if it is possible for this council, for this body, to consider taking some of this surplus, if it is possible, and refund it to the hardworking families of our community, based on income and based on need. Just a thought to consider and think about it. And then I have another question about Resolution R one twenty-seven, three dash twenty-four. Council President, you, you are the council president, Milady Tejada, correct?
I think so.
Well, well, according to the document and the resolution, which is concerning about a million four hundred thousand dollars, you're not. William Patrick is the council president, and this resolution, that is in the packet on page two hundred and thirty-nine, and it's dated March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, and I can share it. And it's in the packet. I just downloaded.
We'll concede the point. It's a typo.
It's a typo.
Yes, a typo. I just wanna make sure that it is corrected, so that way, you know, when it's voted, we have the correct doc, the correct language. Because as it is presented, you're not the president, according to the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I can answer. Yes, I answered. Yes, um, yes, that was a mistake. It will be corrected. What was his other question? You had another question? Oh, Jill, the state renaming the nomenclature of the surplus that he was talking to from the water, the nuance? You know, why they, the state asked for that different language there?
Just because the proper classification of it was on the page that's recommended. And I may have had conversation with you about this, but I was even struggling as to where that item would go. And unfortunately, the one that I picked was not the one that the state chose it to be, so they required me to change it.
Right, and I take the hit for that, because I'm the B A. So that's why, thank you. I just wanna make sure he's clear. And then he also said about, can we refund money for hardworking Perth Amboy? Let me say this, too, because when we, when we, when we presented it about the water and the necessary water rate that would be required here within the municipality of Perth Amboy, one thing we were looking at, is I know previous administrations said, hey, we're not gonna touch water, we'll kick the can down the road, even though every year, there's more stringent requirements with regard to water quality. This administration, this council said, hey, some point, we have to stand up for our children and the residents here, and make sure we take the steps that are necessary to make sure we have clean water. I have to thank them for that and the mayor, because not a lot of people would do that. They would continue to kick the can down the road and say, let's keep water rates the same. But to your point, you said, what can be done for the residents that struggle? They, we do have phone calls that come in, and whether that's one downstairs or filing a tax collector, what they'll do, they give us, they'll bring it up to me and say, hey, this person cannot pay. Can we put them on the payment plan? And we do offer payment plans for those individuals. So that's one thing we do, just so you know, and for the record, too, now. But to the point of what you were alluding to, and I think that's very important, because I think you were saying that as well, at some point in time, we all have to realize, we can't keep kicking the can down the road, and something has to be done. And I think it took the courage for them to say, hey, we have to make sure that this has to be done here within, within the city. And even with that, the water rates, and I can pull that up as well, are still lower than most municipalities within the county. So that's important to note, too. And again, we got different opinions, but we can have different facts.
And just for clarification, it was a partial decision. Not all of us agreed with the, with the water rates, but it did pass. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we are going to close session. I need a motion to go to close session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll go to close session. After close session, we'll come back for the city council meeting. I need a motion to come back from close session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Presiding Officer of the council, Milady Tejada, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, posted on the bulletin board in the city's clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall, two sixty High Street, right after the caucus meeting and the close session. Right now is six fifty P M. Council President Tejada, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices, should you need to make a telephone call. Please go out in the hallway and speak in a low voice, so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Rock, all please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Councilman Torres?
Present.
Council President Tejada?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please, Lord, look over this governing body, and I also want to pray for the family of the officer who died in, in the line of duty in New York. who died in, um, in the line of duty in New York, and his family, and all the officers who worked with him. Also protect our officers, our safety, um, uh, group, and, um, all the, all the military that are abroad and also in this country defending our freedom. Please watch over our students, our schools, our families, and the residents of Perth Amboy. And with that, I say ad nate. Letye, just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ordinance, public hearing. Five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. In the first ordinance, uh, we will have the public hearing today because we have to wait until we get to...
You're okay from the court, yeah.
Uh-huh. So today, we're just gonna...
Vote to move the public hearing to April 10.
April 10. An ordinance amending Chapter 432, including zoning of the city code, requiring all applicable developments to include a mandatory onsite affordable housing set aside. I need a motion to hold the public hearing until April 10.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Records, ordinance number 621-92, adopted August 4, 1992, as amended by ordinance number 1944-2020, adopted May 27, 2020, also known as Chapter 425 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's open to the public. Whoever wants to speak on ordinance number two.
Ladies and gentlemen, Bell Traffic 341, Colfax Street, Perth Amboy, Jersey. Um, I know it's the second reading on this, um, ordinance, and, um, hoping to get all of your support. We addressed our expenses when it comes down to equipment, vehicles, overhead, family support, and, um, we'd like to have all your support on this when you vote on it today. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to call, close public session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
In the past, the council has voted to increase certain rates for certain industries. We did it for the taxi industry, so I think it's only fair that we also do it for the towing. So my answer is yes.
Council President de Hara?
I feel that this is not a fair contract for the residents. Um, it, I don't think it benefit so much the resident, the resident, and they are the most affected by this ordinance. So my vote is no. Agenda, public comments. Citizens may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once per max, for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody wants to talk about anything on the agenda that doesn't have, uh, its own public, um, session? Seeing none, I need a motion to call, close public comments.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports, G O A Goldie CFO Controller submitted the following: Investment report for February 2024 and the check register report for the month of February 2024 in the total amount of $16,894,755 with 46 cents. Ordinance, first reading, not public discussion. Number one, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped person. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about dilations. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. Uh, resolution, public hearing on the calendar year 2024 municipal budget, I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody who wants to speak on the calendar budget? Please. Seeing none, I need a motion to close, close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
R 115-324, amending the calendar year 2024 municipal budget as it was explained by the CFO before. Um, I need a motion. Oh, sorry. Do we do those separate, right? We should do those separate.
It's up to you.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I was still on caucus mode. Okay, so we need to look at the agenda and just tell me the ones that you want to pull.
115, 116, 119, 122, and 135, and 136.
136 is coming out. If, just, so you're, if 115 and 116 are, or 116 is adopted, then 136 comes out.
Yes. We also have 137, which was the last one that we added, right?
Right.
Okay. Anybody else wants to pull anything else?
No, I'm sorry. Yep, oh, okay.
So we're gonna do those first.
They're, they're coming up.
Yeah, it's six, yeah. Both the amendment and the budget were, are separate.
Okay, so, um, let's vote first on the part that it belongs to the budget, so at least we know what to do with the last, um...
We need a motion on the consent agenda portion. I didn't hear it, if it was done.
Oh, okay. No, we haven't.
Okay.
Okay, consent agenda is R 117, R 118. 117 through 1 R 18, 118, R 120 through R 121, R 123 through 1...
34.
And that's the consent agenda. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. Uh, okay, now, R 115-324, amending the calendar year 2024 municipal budget. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. R 116-324, adopting the calendar year 2024 municipal budget. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio? Councilman Torres?
I'm going to state again that in light of all the recent activity and the breakdown of the social contract in this, in this community, that I ask for the mayor to step down as the police director. It should be a line item in the budget for the hiring of a professional. This would fulfill the campaign promise that was made in the year 2020 to hire a professional to sit at that seat. This community is crying out for it. We need it. The Perth Amboy's reputation needs it. And the only thing that I think is responsible in this budget is that there is no salary increase for the council members. Other than that, I feel that this is fiscally irresponsible, and I'm going to vote no.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. R 119-324, amending R 26-124, authorizing settlement of two workers' compensation litigation via an order approving settlement in the matter entitled Domingo Cepeda versus City of Perth Amboy, CP number 2021-216547 and CP number 2022-6483, in the total amount of $89,374. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. R 122-324, authorizing a contract for professional planning services to Topology for area and the need of redevelopment preliminary investigation report and a need of rehabilitation report in the amount not to exceed $144,510, which is being funded through a grant. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio? Councilman Torres?
Change. I fell for that slogan also. And one of the main things about the change in the year 2020 that we were talking about was redevelopment. And here we are, in contract with the same entity that brought us E Part 1 and E Part 2, that brought us all of the warehousing. Topology has brought warehouse, has made Perth Amboy to warehouse city. And then you look at the other cities that they work in, in Morristown. And look at the nice development they, that they complete over there. Or look at the amenities that they provide, the city of Morristown, and what they provide, the cash-strapped city of Perth Amboy. Of course, I'm going to vote no for this entity that really has done a disgraceful thing to this community by putting all of these warehouses and totally negatively impacted the air quality for our children and all of our residents. Topology should have been gone a long time ago. I said no.
Yes. Council President de Hara?
Yes. R 135, authorizing a contract with Suburban Consulting Engineering, Inc. for the professional land surveying, engineering, and construction observation services related to the Think Park improvement in the amount not to exceed $95,700, which is being funded through a grant. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio? Councilman Torres?
Enough has been said about Think Park. I just want everybody to just continue to look at the numbers. And when this is completed, let's see how much the end dollar amount is going to be. And grant money is still taxpayers' money. Thank you. So, uh, no.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. 136 is, is not going, so...
We don't need that.
We don't need that one. And now, 137 is resolution of the City of Perth Amboy, Middlesex County, New Jersey, accepting the bid and authorizing a contract for parks and public properties maintenance commencing April 1, 2024, and terminating November 7, 2024, with two one-year options to Custom Care Services, Inc., Wall, New Jersey, 07719, in the amount not to exceed $141,500. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio? Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President de Hara?
Yes. Now, public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody?
Evening again, GB Voss, 317 Recture Street. Uh, we had a incredible week last week with respect to crime in this community. We saw the lawlessness in full bloom. And, you know, let's talk about it. We had the Fast and the Furious, uh, Route 35 and Smith Street. We had a shutdown of the South Campus because there was a jealous boyfriend that entered with ski masks and a weapon, that we don't know what the weapon was. And then we saw a number of videos of a gentleman by the name of Elvis Valero, who really showed what he thinks about, you know, police officers and their job in, you know, in keeping our, our town safe and abiding by the rules. So, you know, I've been talking about doing something about crime in this community for more than five years. I brought it up in 2019. I believe you were on the city council at that time, Mr. de Hara. And the former council president tried to say that my claims were political in nature. And over the course of the last five years, we've seen repeated violent offenses throughout this community. And we've seen the failure of this administration to do anything about it. Now, I'm not saying that this administration is causing the crime. No one's saying that. But it is their obligation to provide public safety to this community. And if the mayor, who's also the police director, doesn't think he's capable of putting forward a plan or doing the job, somebody else should. Because as Mr. Torres mentioned a minute ago, it is tarnishing the reputation of this community. It genuinely is. And we started in 2019 with the shooting at Port House Tavern. Um, they let that bar reopen the next week without any penalty. Uh, and the list goes on and on. We've seen catalytic converters that were stolen in Budapest, as well as Spa Springs, not Spa Springs, excuse me, Chicken Town over there, Lee Hansen, that area. So we've seen a string of these kind of things. So we've seen a string of these kind of things, and it wasn't really reported to the public for the majority of the time. It was tucked away for political purposes. Only now are we seeing a blotter that's, you know, come back during election time to, to address the public and to show that they're attempting to be tough on crime. And there's, you know, there's a pretty famous meme, and I won't use the language they use online, but they say if you, if you let a person slide, then they say beep beep, then they think they can ice skate. And I would argue that right now, that's exactly what we're seeing in this community. If you fail to create a visible presence of police officers, create a plan to address crime, create community policing programs where you see police officers trying to get information from the public, getting out of their vehicles and doing their job, and that starts with the brass. It starts with the chief policy officer, which is Helmut Kaba, who said that he wasn't going to be the police director, he was going to hire somebody qualified, and yet four years later, he still is the police director. So, I mean, what's it going to take? Um, I've been coming up here regularly to talk about Jose Espeñal. And a lot of what I've been saying is that if you allow the little things to go, if you allow this behavior to become acceptable, people believe that they don't have to obey by the, the bigger rules. And that's what we're seeing in this community when we see people shutting down Route 35 and Smith Street, doing donuts for not two minutes, for eight minutes, because the videos are eight minutes. It's undeniable. It's the objective finder fact, the cameras. And when we have a chief that says on TV that we're going to take the car, which is a legal conclusion, which she should know better with the forfeiture laws, I mean, to look like being tough on crime, it does nothing for the situation in this community. So, you know, like, that's why something has to be done about guys like Jose Espeñal, because if you make exceptions for people like him, because they help you politically, you know, they hit three cars, they yermate in front of a police officer while he's taking a police report on the accident, and we do nothing about it. He gets no suspension because he's above the law, because he goes out and harvests ballots, then other people believe they can do whatever they want in Perth Amboy. And that's what happened on Smith Street and Route 35. Okay? Thank you. Um, I'll just close by saying this. This council always says this is Faulkner Plan B. We counsel strong mayor. You guys have an obligation today to go through the budget and make cuts. That's number one. Number two, you do have the power to order any director to come down here to answer your questions. You do. Utilize it. Thank you.
I am amazed how people come to the mic and start disparaging things with not facts, and I would like the police, the chief police to come and kind of talk about certain things that had been taken care of in the police department. I think our police is doing a great job. And another thing that I have to say is, yes, during political time, we see a lot of faces coming up and talking about different things that happens. It happens in other municipalities, and also Perth Amboy had been catching a lot of things that had not been caught in another municipality. So, Chief, can you please enlighten us a little bit of things that happened, that, things that you can speak about? And another thing is, I know, um, some people have the professional diploma and everything to understand that there's certain things that this council cannot, cannot speak about because there are things that are going through certain, through the, the right channel to be taken care of. And I just want the public to know that. So, maybe you can enlighten us about the nice things that the police department is doing for this town. Thank you.
Can you also elaborate on, um, the crime and what happened? So, a little bit of both.
Um, we'll start with the, the Smith and Carnary thing. We're all aware of that. We're aware that, uh, everyone from out of town came into Perth Amboy to do this, uh, crazy driving and, and break the law. Um, again, there was things said that I said within two minutes and so forth, as I said again, when we are notified. So, if someone's out there videotaping for six, seven, eight minutes before that phone call comes to us, we don't know what's occurring out there until we get that call. So, again, we'll have the CAD report from when the, that first 911 telecommunicator got it, pushed a button to enter and entered that job in to the time that someone was there. As I said...
I'm sorry to interrupt. How much money have we invested in surveillance cameras, and do we have any surveillance cameras in that intersection?
The money has been allocated. It has not been completely funded as, actually not funded, it has not been expended as of yet.
Do we have any surveillance in that intersection?
In that intersection, not through our means, through our, that we own, no.
That is one of the most important arteries of this community. That is a shame to hear that after all of these years, that we don't have something in place in that intersection. That's all I have to say on that matter.
Well, I mean, we have technology in that intersection. As far as video, video, video security systems, no, not video security system, but we have others.
What I've heard in the past, when you came lobbying for, for millions of dollars from this council, was not just cameras, but was also for technology that would hear loud noises. So the amount of reverend those engines were doing should have set off. Whatever technology that you told the council that we were invested in, and that was two years ago, and so here we are on a day like St. Patrick's Day. I am shocked that we didn't have full force on our community on that day, because that day is, you know, most communities have additional police in, like Hoboken or, on that particular day. I was shocked that we did not have that. But also, I was shocked that we're just relying on residents' phone calls for this type of incident and that we weren't being proactive, or that I'm finding out now that we didn't have any technological advancement to be able to locate any, to be able to find out anything like that.
Were you also shocked to find out that we were the only department that did make arrests in that situation and make, and have, um, motor vehicle summonses in excess of 100 motor vehicle summonses have been issued in that and already three arrests? So were you shocked about that because others didn't?
No, but what I am shocked is of the reputation that Perth Amboy has in the last couple of years, especially with all of these videos on NJ 12 and that been circling around, circulating around on social media. Uh, yes, I am shocked. When I do leave town and I tell people that I'm from Perth Amboy, and they tell me about these stories that they hear back from my community, yes, I am shocked.
That they hear, correct. But the truth is what matters and facts is what, what counts. So as I said, um, the officers responded. There was an off-duty officer that was there within two minutes of the initial dispatch, which he radioed back. He was by himself, obviously off-duty, gave a, um, synopsis as to what was going on, reported that back to additional officers and supervisors, and they had a coordinated response. Uh, from individuals that were nearby, I'm hearing clearly that they obviously had the roads blocked. The officers also had to respond into that way. They came, they, they addressed the situation, they made an immediate arrest there, and since then, there's been at least two arrests with several more that are planned. There was over 100 summonses that were issued to various people that were there in various, uh, states of what they were doing, whether it be, um, driving aggressively, they were blocking roadways, whatever that was. The officers are still identifying through the technology that we have additional individuals and are moving forward with additional prosecutions and so forth. So, uh, that is completely ongoing. Obviously, I can't give you names or any of those other things because that is still ongoing and, uh, to protect the integrity of the investigation, but it is still happening. Every day was happening, more things were happening again today. So that has been ongoing, which...
So how many arrests you mentioned?
There are three currently.
Three?
Currently, yes. Uh, for various things, uh, various degree crimes and, uh, some additional charges we're working with our partners, the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office on, as well as identifying these individuals that go and do this all in a, in a tri-state area. So we're working with all of our partners throughout the tri-state area and, uh, identifying people that they didn't have that we now have through our technology and so forth. So we're, we're working with, uh, many, many departments on this issue that it occurs again in other places.
And he also, um, what was mentioned by my colleague was the cameras, and I know we asked you this question last time, but I know we weren't all present. Can you just elaborate more on the timeline of the cameras and what that looks like, even though that was passed?
Yes, they came up to the budget, at the budget hearing itself.
Can you just, um, reiterate that, please?
Sure. That was, um, the, the backhaul on a fiber project, because this will be also coupling with the, uh, IT fiber project that's going on citywide for the city buildings and so forth. And, uh, we are working with an engineer. We've had, met with the engineer. We're waiting for a final product from him so we can get that bid out on the street. Uh, there were some changes apparently in the purchasing laws and so forth that we're working with our purchasing agent on as to how we can acquire those services, whether it be from, uh, co-ops, from state contract, or from, uh, going out to bid. So there was some recent changes on the state level, which we're working through with, um, purchasing department here in the city to be able to, uh, to legally purchase those services and equipment.
And I second that with cameras in that area due to the high amount of people who go there for social, emotional support as well. Um, and then can you just elaborate on the instance with the school? I know that was mentioned as well.
Sure. Um, there were some things that were said here that, uh, did not in fact happen. Um, there was never a gun, okay? There was never a gun.
Was there a gun brought into the school?
No, not at all.
Okay. That was my main...
No, that did not happen. There may be many things on social media that said happened and so forth, but did not. Uh, there was a report, again, still ongoing, so I can't get into every single detail. Uh, there was a report of the potential that someone had a weapon, meaning a gun, that was going to another school building. So out of an abundance of caution, every school building that was underway to that, they were told, asked to shelter in place. Okay, now again, shelter in place, so everyone understands it's not lockdown. It's not everybody hiding under the tables and, and educational environment not going on. What it just means is we're not letting people outside, and they're going to still be engaged in educational environment. Okay? If I'm wrong, I'm Board of Ed experienced people. If I'm wrong, but please let me know, but that's what happens. So that still happens. Teaching is still going on. It's just people aren't let out of the school until we're sure that the area is clear. The, um, school that was potentially where this person was going was, that was put into a lockdown because we didn't want anyone else entering that school and so forth until we're able to get exactly what was happening. Again, out of an abundance of caution. Shortly thereafter, that lockdown was lifted to a shelter in place when everyone was identified and, um, all things were investigated a little further. But at no time was there anyone with a gun in the school. Was there no time that anyone was outside the school with a gun that we have on either video or any other eyewitness that said anything like that? But we did have an initial report of that. So again, that's how we respond, worst-case scenario, so that we can protect everyone, including our schoolchildren, to the best possible.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, going forward, um...
I had one last question before, um, just for the chief. About, um, there's also, I know we mentioned this last time as well, just about crossing guards. Are there any areas certain in need of crossing guards? I know I, um, that concern has been brought up to us as well. Certain areas are not being occupied due to the shortage of crossing guards.
Yes, it's on our website. We're always looking to hire additional, uh, additional crossing guards. There are some that are leaving, so we had some posts that were not immediately covered. Every day, we have to move some, uh, crossing guards around. Sometimes they call out sick. We have to cover them with officers. So, um, I believe there's an additional two or three today even that we've, uh, sent up to the business administrator and personnel, asking, they were interviewed and asking to, uh, to hire them as replacements. So it's an ongoing process.
Is the Willen School being covered with crossing guards?
The Willen School, that, that person did abruptly resign, and I know that they took from another location where there were multiple guards and had moved someone over to that. So I understand that that area is covered. And there were, and since that report also, there were two additional guards that were hired. Okay, please, if, if they're not, and you can get that word to me, if it's not going, please, you know, let me know. We have, uh, almost 50, um, spots to cover with crossing, and it's only going to get more with the new school.
Uh, to stay on this subject matter, I'm, might be mistaken. I thought a couple of years ago, the council approved the hiring of a third-party agency to do the hiring for the crossing guards, to manage the crossing guards. No?
No, uh, that was a number of years ago. I can't tell you exactly when it was. Um, and I don't even remember who the business administrator was at that point in time to, uh, potentially put that out to, um, to bid or, or what it was and when it was evaluated. I don't remember the exact numbers, but the return on investment was not there because the amount of officers that we had, and, uh, I don't remember how many million it was or what have you, but it, it didn't equate to what we were, what we were spending on them. Similar, I know Edison just recently did the same thing. They were trying to look to go to a third party, and that didn't work out for them either, and they wound up, uh, retaining back again to their own people. But I do know what you're talking about. I just don't remember what year that was or what BA that was under. But at that point in time, unless something changed, it did not appear, uh, to be cost-effective to do it. It was not prudent.
Thank you.
But you are correct.
And then going forward, I do have some questions, and I just wanted to clarify this. If I had questions for the police director, shouldn't the police director be here during the first portion of the meeting to answer any questions that the council might have for the director? I'm pretty sure we asked for all directors to be here at that meeting, and most of the directors have been in compliance. If I had questions about NICSUL or any other things that fall under the purview of the police director? Shouldn't the police director?
It also falls under the purview of the police chief as well.
But there's a, there's a, there's two separate positions. There's the police chief, and then there's a police director. So what I am asking for is the director. So if I ask for the next meeting for the, the police director to be here to answer any questions, is it my right as a coun, as an elected, uh, council member to ask for a director to come here to answer any question? Now, no, no, I, I need a business administrator, not a defense attorney right now for the administration. I need a business administrator.
I was going to say, you can ask for, and I guess you know a councilman can ask for what they wish. Of course you can ask that.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure the council had asked in the past for all directors to sit here, just in case a question arose, not just from us, but from the public also. Not just myself, but my colleague, Councilman Puccio also have asked for this in the past for all directors.
If the chief, if the chief were not able to respond to that request, then we, but the chief is more than capable to.
You're changing the rules, are we? You're telling me that, that I cannot ask that?
No, I said you could.
I, I'm, I'm saying, I want to talk to the director, and I'm an elected councilman in this, in the municipality of Perth Amboy. If I ask to speak to one of our directors to answer a question during one of our meetings, what should be the outcome?
Are you more interested in the answer or do you want the person? That's what I'm trying to, so you want an answer or you want the person? Let's just cut to the chase. I mean, so, because if you want the answer, the chief is here to give you the answer for the department. I'm, that's an honest question I'm asking you. Do you want the answer?
So you're saying that, that, that you're not going to request, that I'm requesting for the police director, not the police chief, because do the police chief and the police director have separate duties?
Yes, they would.
Yes, so that, that, that's all I would have to say about that. They have separate duties, correct? And so the council has the rights to ask of questions of any director during a meeting, correct?
I said that.
Is this correct? So can you please say yes for the record?
Okay, yes. The, the council, as your council is aware, can ask and request the administration of anything, and then we would see how the administration would respond. But yes, you're going to ask, without a doubt, 100%.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Old topic, 341 Colfax Street. I too have concerns about that incident on Smith and Carnary, especially there was a, a video that shown a police officer had to push over the car to avoid getting hit. So yeah, I think something definitely has to get done there. Um, on a different note, I want to thank you guys for, uh, voting on the, um, towing, and, uh, thank you for recognizing how we do, and most importantly, for government transparency. You guys sit here and, uh, you're pretty open, most of you guys with the stuff. I know Ms. Cruz, Ms. Morales, Mr. Puccio, Mr. Torres, took a lot of time to discuss this and go back and forth with paperwork. I sent tons of email to Mr. Green and to all of you guys. Council President Milady, um, I wish I could say the same about you, though. I feel that you did a lot of stuff behind the scenes that was very contradictory, and, um, I think you're very biased towards us when you voted. I think you had a personal experience, and you mentioned it more than once, with towing. Last time I was here, when the matter was not open for public discussion, when Ms. Cruz asked the question of how the ordinance changed from one hand to another, and you stopped me from answering, I respected the fact because I couldn't talk about it, but now it's my time to talk about it. I think everyone gave you the paperwork that's needed to be passed forward, and you're the only one that had the power to send it to the city attorney, and you manipulated that based on your experience, probably with the police chief. So I think that was very bad, and I think that, um, it's probably best if you abstain from all towing, um, votes in the future. I think out of all five of you guys, I think, uh, Council President, I think you're the only one who's a real politician up here. And unfortunately, politicians have to be switched like diapers for the same frequent reason as well. So have a good day.
Uh, just to tell you, I did not, no, no, I do have to, just like you have the right to talk, I have the right to say.
You talk fast, I don't have to talk. That's my five minutes.
Yeah, I don't want to, uh, I, I just want to say for the public record that I do, that I do, uh, excuse me, you had your time, and that's it. You, you gave, you gave your time, that's it. It's my time to explain. Um, I, I am being elected to do the right thing. So nobody has to judge my vote. I don't judge anyone here how they vote. So I don't expect anyone to put things in, in, on the ear of the public that I am talking to the chief, that I'm talking to the mayor, that I'm talking to whoever. I make my own decision. When, when I, when I, when I made the decision, when we spoke about, I, I spoke to certain people in the council about how I thought the towing, um, ordinance should be done, we spoke about it. When we came here, things were discussed and people made changes. I don't agree with the changes, so it's my prerogative to just say whether I agree or not. I never stop anyone on this table to not agree about something. Everybody has the right, and that's why we are elected. So if you don't like the way I vote, I'm sorry. That's the way I am. And I just do it for my community. And, and you don't have to tell me when I have to stay in front of vote. I know when I have to do it. So I will do what I feel is right for the community. I don't judge whoever voted yes or no. So everybody has the right to choose a vote. Anybody else?
Get close to the microphone. My name is Cynthia Morero, and I represent King High Ground. In regards to the ordinance, I understand where you're coming from in regards to helping the residents of Perth Amboy. But the facts are that Perth Amboy, because it has become so... Cars, our job is harder, okay? Our overhead is more. We, I do, I do police toll more than just one city. And Perth Amboy is a city that's constant, 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 constant. You have to be there at a certain time. You have to do certain things. There's rules and regulations to everything, but the job is harder. There's no parking, there's no nothing. So in my aspect, it's not the toll bill that should be changed, it's the parking for your people. It's stop building all these apartments where people don't have anywhere to park. I'm really taking cars that I really don't feel should be taken. And who's telling me to take them? You guys. You guys are telling us to take cars that I feel are still not unlawful. So there are cars that are unlawful, and there's some that are not. Why? Because there's no parking. In order for you, in my opinion, the way to help your people with the bill is give them somewhere to park. Give them a little bit more leniency on the curb that if they're parked, you're this much away from a yellow curb, and then you're going to come in, you're going to tow them and tell me that I'm wrong for billing what I have to bill when I have so much overhead. You're, that's all I have to say. So it's not the toll bill, it's your infrastructure, it's your structure. There's no parking, there's no nowhere. Getting from one block to another in Perth Amboy takes you 45 minutes. It's crazy. And our job is hard. There's nowhere, in order for us to do our job correctly, you got cars on top of cars on top of cars because you have no parking. So that makes my life harder. It's not easy. I do more work, and I think that if I'm doing that work, like all of you get a nice paycheck, if you doing that work, I should get paid too. That's all I have to say. It's not the toll bill, it's Perth Amboy. Find something, somehow to accommodate your residents if that's what you're right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad that was said, because parking crisis in Perth Amboy has been just consistent, and it's only growing. And I'm saddened that the council in the past has voted to do away some of the parking regulations for new development. It's just counterproductive, and it's just irresponsible development.
I never said that your job is not hard. It is just that I wanted a different thing to go on the ordinance. I did not say that. I did not say that. I just didn't feel it was, okay, that's it. You already got your chance. Anybody else?
Iris Rodriguez, 335 Fayette Street. I think I want to go back a little bit, and I am, I come here all the time, and I'm really sick and tired of our city being put down, especially since it's being done on social media. And most of it is half-truths, okay? Right now, could you please tell me which one of you were there at that mob scene the day of St. Patrick's Day? Were any of you there? You know what? I was there. I was parked, okay? I was coming back from the parade, in St. Patrick's Day Parade from South Amboy, and I went to eat dinner, and I was there with my cousin Ramona. She was the only one there. I saw what was happening, okay? We called the police, okay, when we saw it. But of course, we had to go over the bridge, and I was the third car in to try to get onto the right-hand side, to get onto Smith Street, make a right to take Ramona home to Brighton Avenue. There was no way, I saw police officers trying to get through. That mob scene was done, it was well done, it was performed the right way. They had everything blocked, they had all the intersections blocked, north and south of Palmberry Boulevard, and in between east and west of Smith Street, it was mobbed with people. And those people, all they had was their phones out there. They were not, they were filming, they were filming, okay? Maybe it took three or four minutes for the cops to get there after the first call, but the first call wasn't, probably was not made within the first two or three minutes of them filming. So that's where the timeframe, that's where you guys and everybody here should realize, okay? And I was there, and I stood there, and I was one to call the police officer. And you probably have my phone on record, because you have a caller ID when you call the 4424, 4424400 number, okay? And as for the people of Perth Amboy, I just want to make it public. When you see something, say something, do something. Don't just go on social media and video it with half-truths, okay? Go there. There was not a lockdown on South Amboy campus. There was a shelter in place, which is way different. I took a time, because I got a phone call in my office, to go to the south campus. And there was already a police officer there, there was parents there, there was no chaos going on, and they had things under order, okay? So please try to do that. And a lot of the media that's reporting, okay? I understand Channel 12, you know, for me, it's 529 on Verizon, because I saw them. Of course, they're videoing what people put on social media, but they weren't there either. That lady that reported for two or three days in a row, she wasn't there that day, but Iris Rodriguez was there with my cousin, okay? So, and I'm tired of this. Please, you know, look into the situation. Get off, get out of your offices, get out of your homes. If you hear something, do something about it, and go out there to the source, and then report. But did I go, do I go to social media? No. When I need a cop, I call a police officer, and I get things done. And I'm not defending anybody here, not you guys, not anybody. And I voted for each one of you that are there, and I'm not defending any of you, nor the police director, nor the BA or anybody, okay? I'm just saying what I saw and what I feel, and I'm getting tired. Because I go out of town, and I don't hear the negativity about Perth Amboy, okay? So I guess we go to different places, and some of you don't go anywhere out of town. But I'm glad that it's leap year, and it's every four years that we get all these people that are running for office, and I'm going to say it, and I didn't want to say it, but I'm saying that come to our meeting. Where are they within the last four years? Where have they been? Now, you know I come as much as possible. Last year I came less because I had knee surgery, but I do come as much as possible, and I listen. So come to the meetings, not just every four years or during election time, and get yourselves educated, and I'm not talking to the council now, I'm talking to the people that are here, and then say something. And if you call a police officer once, and they don't come, call again, and you might get some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to say something about communication. There would be a lot less misinformation circulating if we had a mayor that wasn't afraid to speak to the public when these matters arrived. Now, the fact that I did not receive a NICSU message on that day says volumes. Why are we not using NICSU? Why was I not notified to avoid that intersection on that day? A lot of people could have had, you know, not have an undue burden if they were notified. A lot of people would have avoided that area if they were notified. Why do we have NICSU, and how is it being used? And I think this is something that needs to be answered by the police director. I think that is something under his control, and I think that is something that I would like answered at the next meeting from the police director. Because I hear a lot from meetings that there's a lot of misinformation going on on social media, but there's only one entity that could correct that. That is, this administration could put out all factual information when it happens, and that would eliminate a lot of these rumors that are circulating.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to make a comment about what a gentleman, Mr. Voss over there said earlier in conjunction to what she was saying. He made mention about us, how we do our job here as councilwomen, elected as officials, that, how to do our job, that we are here to question the directors when they were here regarding the budget. I don't know if you were aware, but there was a public hearing last week, Wednesday, where all the department heads were here to present their budget, and we were here to question each and every one of them. That's all I want.
I would like to say something about the budget. When I ran for council, there was two meetings twice a month, Monday and Wednesday. I scheduled that, I knew when I ran that that was going to be my obligation. Since then, we have cut the scheduling, and since then, and instead, we put special meetings. Last week, I had to miss one of the city's most important meetings, the budget meeting, because I had prior engagement. I was at our nation's capital in Washington DC advocating for our congressional leaders for the arts. I met with Loam's office, I met with Payne's office, I met with Melendez's office, and advocated for Perth Amboy, and spoken Perth Amboy in great light, and how much we've accomplished, and how much more could be accomplished with just a little bit of resources in the arts. But I've already had this planned out for months in advance. And I think it was sad that we no longer have our Monday meetings, but I had planned out, when I ran for this seat, that I left open specifically for my obligation as a council member. And since then, the council has stripped down the meetings. And to tell you the truth, even if I was here, I probably would have been one of the only ones answering questions, and the vote would have still came out the same. That's the truth.
For the information, you were provided other dates, and you still couldn't come on the other date.
On those dates, I was busy on those dates, but Monday was not offered. Monday was not offered. Monday was a day that I took time, and 2019, when I decided to run for city council, I knew that Monday and Wednesdays were going to be my obligated days to serve my community.
There were four dates that were given to choose from.
Monday was not, was not in there.
I'm sorry, but I feel that, okay, a special meeting, and there were dates given. If you couldn't make all the dates, it's not my fault that you couldn't make it. And we needed the special meeting just for the budget, which was very important. Okay, anybody else?
Junior Iglesias, 712 Columbus Circle. Councilman Torres, I totally agree with you. Communication is the key. Communications is how we communicate with one another, elected officials and the community. What took place on Route 35 is a totally policy failure of our community policing. And I'm not criticizing the police department. I am acknowledging that the policy that we, how, what took place shouldn't have happened. So I think that as a community, we deserve a report, or a report for the police director, explaining exactly what took place, explaining what we are doing as a community to make sure that what took place will never happen again. What is the plan on public safety? What policies are we putting in place? We're evaluating our public safety policies. This is a matter of public safety policies. And the person, the person that is authorized, right, as a police director, is the one who have to discuss this matter. So I totally agree with you, Mr. Torres, Councilman Torres. Communication is the key. We have to communicate with one another, and it is okay to disagree. It is okay to have a difference of opinion. That is totally fine. What is important is to find a common solution so that what took place never happens again in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, councilwoman Cruz.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I am excited to see, as I mentioned earlier, how expand you are doing absolutely phenomenal. And I do want to continue seeing the students engage and the students involved. And in addition, I am relieved with the contracts with the records ordinance. I think, of course, we didn't meet exactly where we needed to meet. There were parts that the towing company did want higher that we didn't get to meet, but it was a good common ground, in my opinion. And as mentioned by Councilwoman Morales, we did have a special hearing where we were able to ask questions and dig deeper into that. So thank you to the department heads for really presenting and being responsive to our questions. And exactly what was mentioned earlier, when you see something, say something. It's our job, and it's the residents' job to make sure that if you see something, say something, report it right away, so that way we could keep our community safer. And I think we're all in agreeance that what took place with the car situation should not have taken place. And we do need to make plans so that way that doesn't take place. So I do look forward to the report so we can have that communication as to the timing, because I know the communication of what was said. We just need that to be in alliance. And I am relieved to know that what occurred with the students, they were safe. So I do thank the police department and the school. We're moving forward to coming up with a safety plan in that aspect, so I do appreciate that. And that's pretty much it. There's a lot of events coming up, of course, so happy Easter, if you celebrate Resurrection Day. Happy Resurrection Day, and have a great night. And the Slovak flag raising is the same day as the Easter hunt on April 6. Have a good night, and thank you again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morales?
As usual, I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening and participating. And I'd like to see more and more of you coming out. I really do appreciate that. Just wanted to say congratulations to one of our honorees from this past Saturday's Women's Celebration. Sorry, I wasn't able to go. There was an unfortunate death in the family, so was not able to go there and celebrate with you. But congratulations to you and all the...
Thank you, and thank you to the library and those that were honored.
And just want to also give my heartfelt condolences and my regards to all, everyone that was involved in that Baltimore Bridge that occurred a couple of days ago. It is heartbreaking to hear news like that, but our hearts and prayers do go out to everyone that was involved in that incident. And pretty much that's it as far as events are going. Despite, you know, unfortunate happenings, the negative happenings that have been happening, we do have a lot of other positive happenings within this town. So events coming up, the Easter egg hunt, the Diaspora art events coming up also, and just wishing everyone a happy and a blessed Easter, and enjoy it with your loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Puchio?
Thank you, that's my turn. I'm just trying to collect my thoughts for a minute. I had a double root canal today, so a little lethargic. I just want to get something off my chest about something that a very close friend of mine pointed something out to me recently. I wasn't happy about it when she told me, and it was about my conduct. And, you know, we can disagree, the council members up here. But it was pointed out to me that I kind of steamrolled over the people to my left that day. And I want to apologize to these three councilwomen that if I did do that, I didn't mean to do that. So sometimes you get a little overzealous in what I, when I believe what I'm talking. But that said, you know, the way I feel about certain things, you know, that's not going to change. It's just the way I deliver it should change. I shouldn't try to run people over when they go up to the microphone. And I appreciate that being pointed out to me. I didn't appreciate it that night, but I appreciate, after I thought about it, she was right to tell me. And as far as my colleagues are up here, look, sometimes we're not going to see eye to eye, you know? And I respect everybody's opinion up here, and sometimes we don't agree. And, but I'm not going to throw you under the bus. Other than that... Other than that, uh, I just want to give a shout out to the chief back there, Chief Mullin. I saw who was on the agenda tonight with that very unsafe condition out there, and you guys stayed on top of it, you and Captain Matt. But like I said, you know, this is the crazy time. So I still feel strongly about some of the things I've said, I'm still that same guy, but I know I've hurt some people's feelings, and I don't mean to do that. You know, we're all human, and we all, the way I look at it is, we're all human, and if I sat up here and may believe that I'm perfect, I'd be the biggest bony saint up here, because I'm not. So, but thanks for hearing me out. Again, I apologize, and I apologize to you, Mr. Green, because it seems I'm always doing that every other week. But there's a way to do things, and there's a way not to do things. And I think that sometimes it's just better sometime to get your point across without bull-bulging somebody. So I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Puchu. Councilman Torres?
You have to have tough skin to want to be an elected official. And coming to these council meetings, sometimes it's like an arena, because we're not dealing with produce. We're dealing with our residents, with people's lives, and we're impacting people's lives. So I think this is one of the most important things that anyone could do. So I take it serious. And if I'm passionate about it, then sometimes I'm passionate about it. I didn't come here to be delicate or to have, you know, white gloves, um, this is an arena. I'm here to fight for the interest of the residents of Perth Amboy. And the Perth, and the residents of Perth Amboy have the right to critique, criticize, to say whatever they want, when it's their time on that microphone. And in the past, I've had residents critique me and my, my decorum, and how I conduct myself, and it's their right. I don't have the right to criticize them back or tell them what they should say about me or not here at the meeting. That is their right, part of our First Amendment. Going forward, um, I'm gonna say a couple other things. I might have to watch my back for saying some of these things, but right now, I have zero confidence in our mayor sitting in the role as police director. And if the council's not gonna work with me to make sure that that role changes, then I'm gonna plead with Mayor Helman Kaba to do the right thing for his community, and to step down as police director, and to fulfill his last campaign promise, and to hire a professional. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated tonight. Thank you for being here, for being part of this conversation. We continue doing the right thing, as everybody feel that is the right thing for our community. We will be glad to continue doing that. And thank you to the police department with their great job that they have been doing lately. And, um, also, I feel that this community, um, also appreciates a lot of the stuff that are happening in Perth Amboy. And sometimes with our comments, with our attitude, we kind of send a message out there about what Perth Amboy is, is like, which is not really the facts about Perth Amboy. But I love this town. I came to this coun- this country when I was nine, in 1974, and ever since then, I have lived in this town, so this is my city, and I'm gonna do the right thing. What I feel is the right thing for this, for this community. And I want to thank you, have a happy Easter, and God bless you all. I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.